Testing one, two, three, four.
Audio is good.
Testing one, two, three, four, five.
Nico, this is Rex, just making sure you're seeing and hearing me.
Audio's good, visual's good.
Fantastic, thank you.
So we're having, I just want to let you guys know we're having some connectivity issues with some of the supervisors. So as soon as we can get more on, the chair will start the meeting, okay?
Hello?
Uh, hearing you loud and clear.
Great, thank, thank you. I am waiting for, Supervisor Lee is having the same issue I did. So if we can just hold on for a minute, hopefully she can join. And then I don't see Supervisor Christie.
Chair Gruhaba, Supervisor Christie is also having issues connecting.
Okay, well, just go ahead and wait. Let's give us another five minutes and hopefully we can figure it out, okay? Thank you. Apologize for the, the issues.
Hello, this is Supervisor Christie, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you loud and clear, thank you sir.
You bet.
Supervisor Christie, Supervisor Lee and I also had the same problem. And so I believe Nico is on his way to try to help you, but if you're not in the office, then um, you can work through Melissa to try to get it, yeah, but he's on the phone. Okay, thanks.
Uh, uh, can you hear me now, manager?
Yes, I can hear you fine, yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Gruhaba, just so you know, I have not heard from Supervisor Heinz, so I'm not sure if he's also having issues.
He indicated that he would not be joining. He texted me um, this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Supervisor Lee is having the same technical issues that I did. And so, if, it's okay, can she, if I have her here confirming, have her on speaker, on my phone? Is that okay?
Fine with me.
Okay. Can you all hear her? Okay. Yes, okay, so maybe what we can do is we can do a roll call to establish quorum. And I see Dan looking, so just let me know, Dan, if you have any legal issues with what we're doing here. Okay.
Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Heinz. Supervisor Lee.
Here.
Supervisor Scott.
Here.
Chair Gruhaba.
Here.
The records show that Supervisor Heinz is absent, all other board members are present. This meeting is being conducted virtually.
Thank you. So we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And Melissa, I'm sorry, can you um, list off who's going to be leading us in the pledge?
Yes, it's Kristi Lynn Heth. She's an administrative specialist with Parks and Recreation Department.
Thank you so much for being here. Could you unmute yourself and lead us in the pledge, please?
Hi.
Hi, thank you for joining us.
I don't know if the video's working or not, I can't tell.
It's not, but I can hear you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you want me to start?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag,
To the flag,
United States of America,
And to the republic for which it stands, For which it stands,
One nation,
Under God,
Indivisible,
and indivisible,
with liberty and justice in our heart.
Thank you so much, appreciate you joining us in this little bit awkward, sort of an awkward moment in the morning, but we appreciate you being here. And thank you for all your service to Pima County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have the land acknowledgement statement by Dora Maldonado, she's a council aide for Ward 6. And we have a video.
Video.
Audio issue.
Please bear with us.
Okay. We are out of practice with the virtual meeting. We are not working out for us today. I don't hear it. Neelak? Okay, I don't think that that's gonna work out. Maybe we can get it for our second meeting. Let me go ahead and find the language for the land acknowledgement and I'll just read it.
Yeah, my apologies, I'm not sure why it's not working.
Yeah, okay, let me, I believe I'm getting it sent to me right now. Okay, um, um, can you hear me okay? I'm unlead it, all right, there we go. All right, I'll go ahead and read it. On behalf of Pima County residents, we honor the tribal nations who have served as caretakers of this land from time immemorial and respectfully acknowledge the ancestral homeland of the Thaunauta Nation and the multi-millennial presence of the Basque Yaki tribe within Pima County. Consistent with Pima County's commitment to diversity and inclusion, we strive toward building equal partner relationships with Arizona's tribal nations. Thank you. And then maybe for the second meeting, we can figure out and let, and let Dora read that one. All right, so now we're onto the canvas, item number four. This is pursuant to ARS 16-642A, Canvas of the election results for the November 5th, 2024 general election, Administrator Leshar. And I know that we have our Elections Director, Constance Hargrove, and County Recorder, Gabriela Casades Kelly, on the line as well. I can't hear you, Jen.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can!
Thank you. Chair Gruhaba and members of the board, my apologies, uh, the Elections Director, Hargrove, did have a memo for you all that walks through the canvas. Unfortunately, I think you just got it about 8:15, 8:20 this morning. But I've asked if she could just walk through it a little bit, as we had indicated you would get for the meeting, an idea of what's, it's, it's a fairly large document for you to understand and to just simply vote to approve the canvas without some background information and what's included. And, and Director Hargrove can walk us through that, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Chair Gruhaba.
Can you um, get a little louder?
There you go, a little bit, great, thank you.
Good morning, Chair Gruhaba, members of the board. I, I do present to you this canvas. I do want to certify that all of the statutory requirements for conducting an election have been followed. So I'm not gonna read that part, you do have the memo before you. But the one thing I do want to point out, and this has been a part of the conversation throughout the election, is that ballots does not equate to cards. So the number of ballots that were cast do not equate to the number of cards that were actually processed. And so we cannot use the terminology interchangeably. So the, the canvas report, as I will go through, um, if we would look at page two of the documents. So the early ballots process report is actually on page 14 of the canvas. And I know you probably don't have it in front of you. Um, this is from the recorder. And so the recorder indicates how many ballots were actually sent, early ballots were sent, and how many ballots were returned, as well as how many ballots were turned over to the elections office to be processed. So when we're looking at number of ballots, or number of early ballots to be processed, this is the number that we're looking towards, whether or not we received them and processed them all. So that report is important for early ballots. And then page 77 is an overview of the provisional ballots that the recorder received and the dispositions of those ballots. There is a detailed report in here for provisional ballots. This one is actually just the summary of how many ballots were actually accepted and how many were rejected. The recorder accepted 3,555 of those provisional ballots. And the total number of ballots, provisional ballots was 6,849. And I believe there was some question from Vissola Aaron about the numbers on the Secretary of State's website not matching or fluctuating. And the reason for that is because all provisional ballots were not counted and all the early ballots were not counted, because some had to be cured. And those ballots that needed to be cured, some of them were not accepted. So to try to add the numbers up and come to a this many ballots should have been processed because this many ballots were left over to be processed, doesn't work. Um, so it's a lot more that goes into it than that. So those are your provisional ballots. And then there is the ballot process page on page 78. And on this page, the Elections Department just pulls out the summary of numbers that we have of what we process. So ballots processed, and there is a ballots process report that goes along with this for early ballots. So ballots processed would be the early ballots, affidavits that we received from the recorder. And then we process all of those. Um, there was one that was rejected on our side that we did not process. This number is not going to match the number of ballots cast, so I want to say that first. Ballots counted, those are the ballots that we received from the vote center. And so those, that is the total number of ballots we counted from the vote center. Provisional ballots processed, um, the ballots we received from the reporter's office, they gave us 6,619 ballots. They were not all verified. And verified means that they are okay to count. Unverified means that they could not determine their eligibility or either they weren't registered or there was something else wrong that they could not count that ballot. So verified ballots were 3,517 for provisionals. Presidential provisionals, um, verified were 36 ballots. So total ballots that we processed was 518,595. These are all the ballots we received, these are all the ballots that we processed. Still not ballots cast, but ballots processed. If we look at the election summary on page one, starting on page 150, this is where we get into ballots cast. So ballots cast, total ballots cast, and I'll arch this so I can see it, was 518,466. So a little bit different from ballots processed, a little bit lower from the total number of ballots that we processed. And the reason for that is because the voting equipment only counts the first page of a ballot as a ballot cast. So we had a two-page ballot. So if anyone did not send in the first page, that is not counted into the ballots cast number. That does not mean that the votes on the second page were not counted, they were counted. But they just did not tick the number up, the number of ballots cast. So there were a handful, not very many, and we were really surprised and happy to see it, of individuals who only sent in that second page. And the majority of the voters, as you can see, sent in votes. So total ballots cast was 518,466. So total ballots cast was 518,466. Polls of the vote centers, that was 72,633 early ballots cast, 442,281. That's a little different from the, um, I'm not on that page, the other number. It's a little bit lower than the other number because there were ballots that came in with just the second page. And then provisional ballots, um, cast ballots cast is 3,552 ballots. So these are the numbers, these are the total ballots that were cast for this election. In the candidates and in the propositions, votes are counted, um, for that second page, for page two, page two and the second page. All those votes are counted and accounted for, is just not in the ballots cast, um, totals. And the next several thousands, a thousand pages or so are the precinct, um, reports. So if you look at, and the best thing to look at is the, the summary results, results report. And I will try quickly show you what our, um, I don't know if I can share, Nico, can I share?
One moment. Should be able to share now.
Okay. So when I speak of early ballots, ballot process report, this is the report that I'm talking about. It gives a detail of counting of every batch that we received from the recorder's office, the total number in the affidavit envelopes, because we count the envelopes. And then it goes on to, in more detail, how many ballots we sent, cards, I'm sorry, we sent to count, and how many total cards were counted. Um, and I did provide links in the memo, so you can go to this page. But this is an accounting of what we did with every early ballot that came into our office to process for the election. Let me stop sharing that. And I don't want to talk too much, if I can, oops. Get back to my screen. Okay, I'm not a WebEx person. Nico, how do I stop sharing? Okay, hold on, wait, I think I see it. Got it, perfect, you're in, okay. So I do submit that, um, the, the ballots received and the ballots processed and the results for the election are accurate, um, based on the information we received from the vote centers and the ballots received from the recorder's office and what we were able to process in our office. And I am happy to answer any questions. I know that was a lot of information and I was kind of quick, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Director Hargrove. Any questions?
Chair Gruhova.
Supervisor Scott.
Uh, Director Hargrove, thank you for going through that and also for your memo sent earlier this morning. With the list of provisionals rejected, there was one category that I wasn't clear on. What does it mean when it says vote center issue?
If it says vote center issue, I believe, um, that category and the recorder, um, Recorder Casades Kelly can probably answer better, is that there was an error made by a poll worker, they believe, in issuing that provisional ballot. I'm not sure what the error was, but there was an error by the poll worker. Is that correct?
This is Recorder Constance Kelly, yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, then I'll go ahead and move approval of the canvas.
Second.
Of a motion in a second by Supervisor Scott. Discussion?
Chair Gruhova.
Supervisor Scott.
Could, could Mr. Jerkowitz outline, uh, the statutory role of the Board of Supervisors when we meet to approve the canvas? I think that would be helpful to the public.
Okay.
Sure, so under ARS 16-642, Board of Supervisors has a mandatory duty to approve and certify the results of the election as of today's date. That's very important to do because the Secretary of State asked to certify the election results for the state of Arizona on Monday. That's also a mandatory statutory duty. If the county did not do so, then that could jeopardize the inclusion of Pima County's votes in the state and national vote totals. Um, the Board has, has duties under Title 16 to supervise, um, the Elections Director and to process and count the ballots, certify the results, um, issue election certificates to those people who were elected. Um, and in this particular case, uh, because there was a statutory, um, met the requirements for a recount, which we'll meet in the next meeting to discuss, um, the Board has a mandatory obligation to request a recount from Superior Court in Haveras as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jerkowitz. Thank you, Chair Gruhova.
Yeah, any other questions? I do want to take the opportunity to thank, um, both the elections and recorder's offices and all of the hundreds of employees. We had, um, seen a record turnout, um, and also a ballot that was double the size. And so I think when we look at, you know, there was some frustration with some, you know, how things were, how long it took. Um, nationally, we were getting a lot of attention for the time. I also think it's important for us to note that, um, every election, I think we're getting better. And, um, I'm, I'm sure that there'll be an opportunity for us to look over pros and cons and what worked and didn't work. But I do think overall, every valid vote was counted. Um, I want to thank you all for both of the work that you did. I know that it was incredibly difficult and very stressful. And so, um, we appreciate all that. Anything else? Alright, we have a motion in a second. Oh, in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item passes, um, for zero unanimously. Thank you. So for the next meeting, since we had some problems getting in on this one, should we just mute ourselves and stay on this one? Or is there a different link for the next meeting?
There is a different link.
Oh, joy.
Uh, so it is labeled second meeting. And, uh, just a reminder, you guys are using the panelist password, not the WebEx password.
Right, so what we'll do then, is I'll get off of this and try to log on to that meeting now. Just give me some problems, but.
Chair Gruhova, so you'll be adjourned this meeting as well?
I will, I will.
But will, will we start at 10 o'clock?
Yes, we will start at 10.
Okay.
That's what's posted, so, yeah. We're trying to figure out a way that we could just merge one into the other, and legal advice suggested we do two separate, so that's what we did. Alright, well, thank you all for your attendance. This meeting is adjourned and we'll see you in 30 minutes for the next one. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.